Is also out of town and Lark Reynolds is out of town. So, um, but we, I have the rest of our board here tonight and we welcome all of you. If we have our union represent, represent, representatives here. And also, um, Tim from the transcript, we appreciate all of you being here and those of you who have traveled to come to have some recognition. So, um, we'll start tonight by, um, having our pledge of allegiance. So if you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One of the great opportunities that we have every month is recognition and so, um, tonight is no different. At our board meetings, we, um, enjoy doing district recognition and we appreciate those who have traveled from Dougway tonight. Um, and so we'd like to, um, recognize those who have been brought to us tonight. And so tonight we'll start with, um, if, if we want, if we'll have Jeff come up. Jeff, you can do your introductions and just as a matter of, uh, how we kind of just do it, if you'll come up and we'd like to have, um, Jeff hear about you and we'd like to have you recognize your families or anybody that's here to support you. And we also ask you to just walk along and we'd like to shake your hand and, um, give you a thanks for what you do and for all that you're, for being here. So Jeff?
Well, we, uh, appreciate being here, chance to recognize some of the good people from Dougway. It's kind of weird being in the middle, so I'll just keep looking both ways. But, uh, the first one we have today is, uh, our student, which is Mackenzie Thackeray. So if she'd come up here by me. To tell you a little bit about Mackenzie, uh, I'm just going to read what I wrote because I don't want to, you just stay right there. Um, I don't want to miss out on anything, uh, because she's such an amazing, uh, student that we have.
Okay.
That's right.
I'll just keep moving. How's that? Go in a circle. Um, uh, Mackenzie's an excellent student that comes to school every day with a smile on her fa- on her face, as you can tell right now. Um, she works very hard. She's also always polite and respectful and, uh, is probably one of the kindest people I've ever been around. Um, because she's kind to everyone. She has a very quiet personality, uh, never causes any problems at school. I don't know about home, but, uh, at least at school, she's a, a model student. But, uh, one thing about her too is she never seeks recognition. She's just one of those kids that quietly works hard every day and doesn't try to, to, uh, put themselves above anybody else, but does everything that she's supposed to do. Also, uh, one of the reasons we nominated her was her family has been dealing with some very serious medical issues. And, uh, she's had to step up and kind of be the little mom in a way. Is that okay to say it that way? Um, you know, that I've heard of mornings where she's up at five or five thirty in the morning helping the other kids get ready. Um, because mom and dad were at the hospital dealing with some things and so, uh, you know, that can be hard on, uh, any, uh, young person, let alone someone that's trying to get ready for school. Um, and she did all this without, uh, ever, uh, being, uh, ever complaining or being upset about anything. Um, also, I, I, we put, uh, she shares, uh, her own worries and the burdens on herself. One thing that we've watched with her is she has a little sister and she's right there. And, uh, when she has a hard day, uh, she will come up to the office and hold her little sister and comfort her and get her going again. And then she quietly goes back to class. And, uh, you know, a lot of kids would, would struggle going back cl- to class themselves, but she just, she's a class act, just a great kid. So, um, she's just an all-around good student and person. So we'd like to recognize her tonight. So, thank you. So, I'm going to give you this.
Mackenzie, will you, um, we'd like to have you introduce your family that's here with you.
That's my dad, Tom Thackeray, and that's my mom, Annie Thackeray. That's Tyler, Tanner, and Ally.
Nice.
And there's Aunt Mindy and baby Haley and Kate on the end.
That's awesome. Thank you for coming. What a great support. Okay. Just come and shake our hands. Good job, Mackenzie. Thank you. I just want to add, isn't that a great thing about Dougway, the, the new school at Dougway? That here, uh, eighth grade Mackenzie that can be in the same school with her little siblings and that, that's the great, the beauty of Dougway. What a, what a great community and a great school. So.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, our next, uh, presentation is our, uh, staff member of the month and it's Kathy Mayer. So I'm going to get Kathy to come up here by me. Um, some of you know Kathy, we were able to, uh, steal her from Northlake, uh, this last year. She became our instructional coach and, uh, what an amazing person. I just want to read a little bit about what we put down. Um, so she's assumed the role of instructional coach for Dougway, but she also helps, uh, I'm also over Vernon Elementary. And she then, uh, picked up that duty also. Uh, and so she helps with Vernon. Um, uh, and we're, like I said, we're very lucky to have her. She brings a lot of experience and knowledge to her position. She's an employee that will happily help in any area that the school needs. Um, she wears so many hats in the building as most instructional coaches do, but, uh, now she has two buildings and wearing all those hats. So that's a pretty amazing, uh, person she is. Um, uh, with her guidance and coaching, our students are making greater progress. She helps with all levels of students, not just the elementary. She started to help us, uh, somewhat with the high school students also. Um, and she quietly goes about her duties every day, uh, without asking for anything or, or, uh, any, uh, recognition or anything like that. Um, and she never seems to have a bad day. Uh, Kathy shows up, even when I've had a bad day, I come in frowning sometimes. She comes in smiling. So it kind of lifts me up, but, uh, and she does this quietly. Uh, the staff admire and respect her very much. So we appreciate her more than she'll ever know. So this is Kathy Mayer.
Kathy, lucky to have you. I also want to recognize the foundation for always giving these little gifts to those employees. We appreciate that.
All right, our last, uh, person to recognize is, uh, Rick Kimmler and he's our volunteer for our building. So we'll have Rick come up here. I'm going to have you hold this too. Is that okay? Tell you a little bit about Rick. Uh, when I first got out there, uh, and talking with Coach Andres and a lot of the employees, uh, Rick is, I think every building hopes to have somebody that's the go-to guy and that's Rick. Um, Rick is one of those guys that really, he doesn't need to be in the building, um, but he spends probably most of his spare time in the building. Um, and has done for a, a long time. Um, uh, just to see, just want to read a little bit about what I put in here. Um, he, a little bit after I got, first got there too, Rick showed up at the office and it kind of took me by surprise because he walked in and he said, uh, what can I do to help? I thought, who is this guy? You know, no one comes into a school and offers to help. No. So, uh, I, I was just impressed right from the start. Um, he's constantly helping with coaching, filming games, subbing classes, uh, jumped in with a yearbook. Um, he helps with mentoring students and I could go on and on. Just a class act. Um, and this is aside from his full-time job, which is with a different contractor out there in Dougway. Um, he's also been a contact to, uh, help us acquire funds, um, through a company. And, uh, a lot of money over the years because of Rick has helped, or he's helped us, uh, and now this year Vernon, um, has, uh, been able to acquire some funds because of, of Rick's help. And one thing about Rick, I will tell you, he's not very, uh, he doesn't like to be in the limelight. So he's a little bit nervous about being up here. Um, I was hoping when I told him that he would actually agree to show up, so, uh, and he did luckily. So, um, uh, also Rick doesn't ask for anything in return. Um, I've joked with him many times that we need to get him some of the school, uh, clothing and things and he just quietly says, that's okay, that's okay. But, uh, just want Rick to know how much we appreciate him and, uh, he's invaluable to us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. And I'll read from your example. Well, Jeff, thank you. Thanks for all you do in Dougway and for those who've made that trip out here tonight. We really appreciate your being here. What a great recognition. This is truly one of our favorite parts of board meeting is getting to see and meet so many awesome people that make our district the best district in the state. So we wel- wel- welcome you to stay. You know, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but if you need to head back, we certainly understand, but we appreciate your coming. And again, thank you for all you do. So, okay, we're, uh, the next item on our, our agenda tonight is, uh, we have Bruce Williams here from Zion's Public Finance and Brandon Johnson, and we would like to welcome them up to do a presentation for us, um, on a bond resolution.
As you mentioned, uh, I'm Bruce Williams from Zion's Public Finance and, uh, for some reason or another, I feel very comfortable with this group. I wanted to say, you know, I think I'm a sick individual. I like going to school board meetings. After twenty-four years of doing that, uh, at least once a month, uh, it feels good to be back with you tonight. So I appreciate that. On the agenda, you do have, uh, a, a resolution in front of you, uh, that we would ask that you, you consider tonight. Um, back in ninety-five, as you recall, uh, November of ninety-five, uh, there was a bond election for forty-nine million dollars, which passed. Uh, there, you've issued last year, uh, the first installment of those bonds and there's sixteen million dollars still remaining, uh, to be, to be issued. The resolution that's before you would, uh, give the authorization to go ahead and issue those bonds. And we as Zion's Bank would, uh, Public Finance would be assisting the district and, and, uh, Lark and the superintendent to go through a competitive bond sale, much like you've done before. Um, and, uh, uh, this resolution does several things. The first thing that it does, it sets the parameters for that bond sale. Uh, the maximum amount that could be issued of sixteen million dollars, uh, the maximum interest rate that any, uh, maturity could have, which is, uh, five point five percent. The maximum term or length of the bonds, which is twenty-one years. We anticipate the bonds would actually be twenty, but we always add just a little to give you flexibility if you need it. And then the, the maximum discount from par of the bonds, which means that, uh, you would, uh, not go below ninety-eight percent of the value, uh, when you sell the bonds. Uh, timing on this, just to kind of give you an idea, uh, tonight, of course, you would, if, if you go ahead and approve that bond resolution, it would also, uh, approve, uh, a publication of a notice to bonds, of bonds to be issued, which is required by law. And, uh, that would probably be done sometime next week in the, in the transcript. Um, and then during June, in early June, probably about the fifth or sixth of June, uh, the bonds will be rated. And of course, as you have always had in the past, they'll receive your underlying rating and then, uh, the triple A bond rating from the school bond guarantee program, which, which saves districts significant money there. Uh, there, the bond sale is tentatively scheduled right now for June twentieth. Uh, and then, uh, the, the, uh, actual closing or delivery of the funds would be somewhere around July twelfth. And that, that way it'd have some money so Steve can start spending money, uh, like, like he always does a really good job of. Uh, so, you know, that's, that's kind of your tentative schedule. Um, the other thing it does is it's a, it's a delegating authority resolution, which you've done before, where you delegate to, to Lark or if Lark is not available to superintendent or if either those two are not as available to, uh, the board president, to make the final decisions concerning, uh, approving the, the sale of the bonds on the date of sale. Uh, we anticipate the market is, is holding fairly, uh, stable right now and we're hoping that it does so, uh, through, through June. Um, there is a possibility that the, the Fed will raise, uh, rates again. Uh, probably no more than a quarter of a percent is what they're talking about at this point, but it's a possibility that they'd leave them as they are now, which are, which are good rates and, and you should feel good about it. As was mentioned before, Randy Johnson is here from, from, uh, Farmers Johnson. And if you've got any specific questions for him about the actual resolution, uh, he'd be more than willing to answer any questions. So with that, uh, we would recommend that to use a board, approve this resolution so that we can start forward down the, the path of, of getting the sixteen million dollars worth of, the remaining sixteen million dollars worth of bonds issued and ready for you to be able to use them on, on your construction projects.
Thank you. Does, um, anybody have any questions first or, or otherwise I'd entertain a motion?
Okay, now I've got a light. I can, I motion that we approve, um, the resolution authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bonds, series twenty seventeen. Is that sufficient?
Okay, it's been moved by Scott and seconded by Kathy to accept the resolution providing for the issuance of the general obligation bonds.
Series twenty seventeen.
Series twenty seventeen. Um, is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you and we'll start moving forward.
Thanks for the nuts. Anybody we can share up here? All right. Scott says, no, I'm not sharing.
It's the only reason I like Zion's to come.
Okay, well, we're glad to have Marissa with us. She got here from Stansbury, so just in time for patron comment. So, um, this next part of our meeting is the patron comments section. We do have one, uh, patron that's, um, signed up. We just want to remind you that if you'll come to the podium and sign in, speak into the microphone with your name. And also just remind you that this, um, is not the time for personnel issues. Um, that's better addressed in another forum with either the superintendent or President Manzio. Um, but we, and we have three minutes and so, um, Andy Graff, looks like, thanks for coming. And I just also remind you, sorry that, um, don't be offended if we don't have any conversation because this isn't what we do here during patron comments. So we take what you, you know, we'll hear what you have to say, but we generally will not address that tonight, but potentially we'll be addressing it another time. Okay? All right.
So I'm, whoop, I'm Mr. Andy Graff Esquire. I put Esquire down because I like the way it sounds. Um, doesn't actually mean anything. Esquire. Just want that on the record. Everybody has seen recently in the news, the pay raises that have been coming out from the other districts. Um, I worked in Granite School District until I came over here. This is my first year in Toolah School District. I've been teaching five years now. Um, and you see these, you know, eleven percent pay raises and, and it's enticing. It's enticing to teachers like me. It's enticing to other teachers. It's enticing to new teachers. And it comes down to a simple supply and demand issue where the supply of teachers isn't there. And so there's a demand for teachers and if this district isn't following along with that demand, we're going to be losing some of the awesome talent that can come along here. As I look around the district, I see wonderful things happening with these wonderful students everywhere. Um, I work at Grantsville Junior High. I teach language arts there and it, it's a wonderful place to work. Um, I ran over to Overlake Elementary today to give a quick presentation in my daughter's class about Irish music. And you just look around our schools and there are wonderful things happening. And it comes down to, I think, a value issue for teachers. We want to feel valued and I think when we see the other districts placing that value on their teachers, it would help morale, it would help the quality of education in this district for that to be considered. Um, so that's all I have. Thanks.
You. Go ahead, Marissa.
I think we agree with you one hundred percent. That's all I can say.
Hundred and ten, hundred and ten percent.
And we are in the middle of negotiations, so.
Yeah, and we, and honestly, we had, just a little side note that, uh, dur- during recent conference, we actually had a great conversation with, uh, the Jordan, uh, board who pretty much, you know, ran with this ball first. And it was interesting to, as us, as, as board members to, um, hear, you know, how they were doing it and re- recognizing the, the need in, throughout the state. And, uh, we appreciate, and, and hopefully people recognize that it is one of our board goals. And we take that seriously and, uh, we recognize that we do have great teachers and we want our teachers to know that we do value them and that we want them to be compensated and fairly. And, uh, and as Marissa said, we're in the middle of negotiations, so just keep that in mind. But thank you for coming. Okay?
Go ahead. Thanks. Thanks for filling in. Um, and by the way, the pathway night at Stansbury was very nice. Um, next on the agenda is a consent calendar. It includes the minutes, expenditure, revenue and disbursement reports, personnel decisions, a hundred and fifty mile contest, uh, and a sale of bus sixty-eight on consignment. Is there a motion in regards to the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
All second.
It's been moved by Carol and seconded by Kathy to approve the consent items. Um, any discussion to that motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
There, there are minutes that are part of that, that in fact, looking at it, several of us weren't here.
So do you want to vote on them or not? Is that what you're saying?
Well, and candidly, I, I can't tell you if I can approve those minutes and, and as I, as I look at this group and looking at the minutes.
We don't have enough.
You don't have a quorum to approve some of the minutes from, you, you see my point of order? I'm, and I'm not sure what the right action is, if those minutes have to be removed and then approved next time when we have, because there are only four people here that work me and aren't those the ones that are going to have to approve it? Because how can I vote to approve minutes that I wasn't part of the conversation?
Well, according to the rules, I believe you can, but I, if I were you, I don't know that I would want to.
That's.
So, um, yeah, we can remove them if you like.
Well, and I, I don't, and.
Approve them or, because they can just stay on the website as a draft until they're approved. It's not a big deal.
They have to just be available for public viewing.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's all I was thinking about and I, I, you know, I noticed that Kathy and Carol weren't there either and so I wasn't sure how that would work.
So are you, um, will you amend your motion to remove? Yes.
Just the work meeting minutes?
Just, just the, that, um, work meeting minutes or?
Yeah, because, uh, I, we were all here for the prior.
Right, right.
Full board meeting, so.
Good point, Scott.
So I amend my motion to approve the consent calendar, uh, with removing the minutes from the school board meeting, uh, work meeting held on.
April twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth. I had pneumonia, sorry.
Do you still second, Kathy? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent items with the removal of the meeting minutes from the work session on four twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Yes. You better turn your microphone on.
Very. Without intending, I got to get all the information. It was wonderful.
I'm glad you got it. It was a good meeting. Okay, um, thank you. Seven point one recruitment report, um, Terry Christensen, Human Resources Director.
Well, thank you for having me today, uh, to report on what we've been doing the last few months and, and going around the country and trying to find teachers. As was mentioned earlier, um, the districts throughout the country are experiencing, uh, high demand for, for their teachers. The programs that we go to, the, the numbers are declining within, uh, those colleges. So, so we have to go a little bit farther and wider and as you see in the report, we've gone to a number of teacher fairs, um, out of state and some in-state. I, I actually do spend time on every campus in the, in the state. Um, we have needed to, in order to fill our, uh, teaching positions, go out of state. Um, where the, um, salary are less competitive than they are here, but that is catching up as you see, uh, throughout the news reports. So just wanted to, uh, spend a minute, um, talking with you about that. Um, the total resumes received, well, these are things that are ongoing. So it's still a question mark. Um, the recruits that are hired, I, I have information about that. Seven out of state, nine in-state and five out of country so far. And those are once directly tied to recruiting fairs. There are still some that are waiting for districts to, uh, solidify their salary schedules prior to making a decision on whether or not they come to us or not. So, uh, currently we have twenty-four secondary openings and twenty-six elementary openings. And that, uh, pretty much changes by the day. Um, so we're trying to fill them as, as quickly as possible. Um, so that the teachers needed for FY eighteen, that, uh, scale, I brought in updated numbers for you. So as a part of that, we do spend, uh, a little bit of money, uh, out of our, my budget as well as special ed's budget in, in buying, uh, things to, um, give to the individual candidates as we meet with them at the fairs. Uh, standard procedure there. Um, and that's, we, we have a nice stockpile back there, so we should be able to use that for upcoming years. But I wanted to, uh, talk a little bit about that as well as the job fairs that we anticipate going to in the future. Because as, as was mentioned before and I've talked about before in other board meetings and other ancillary meetings is that, um, the compensation is, is a big factor. Uh, we're also trying to do some other things to entice people to come out and at least see what's going on here. Because we feel like if we, uh, can show them what's going on in our district, then they will actually want to come here. And, uh, we're, we're hoping through the negotiation process that, that everything catches up to that. So, uh, just wanted to spend, uh, a minute talking with you about some of these other fairs. We've done a lot of research to indicate which fairs we want to go to in the future. But, um, with all that being said, I stand for any questions. We'd want to be brief.
Questions from the board? We appreciate your efforts.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Karen.
Will you address the DLI teachers? Is it unusual that we don't have those in place yet or not?
At, uh, at this point in time, it's, uh, not unusual. Uh, because when we're talking about the, the DLI teachers, we need to address visa issues with them if they're, specifically if they're coming from out of country. And that weighs a little bit on what happens with, uh, federal government and how many visas they will allow to come in from different countries, whether it be, uh, J-one or an H-one, N-one or a H-one B-one, H-one B. So all of those different visas will, they take a little bit more time and effort to go through that process. So in the past, when we've had people come to us, uh, from out of country, that, uh, they might not be able to start on the first day of school, but they have to wait until that visa is granted prior to being able to work for us. So it's, it's a whole timing issue. We hope to have, uh, those things. We're working with, uh, Jenna Solson, an attorney out of Salt Lake that helps us go through that process, but yes, it's not unusual to not have them filled at this point.
So you don't anticipate that being a problem?
We do not because we, we work with the state and the state has helped us with, if we get in a real pickle, they, we have MOUs with, with, uh, the state office as well as different countries to bring their educators here who want to have, uh, a US experience. So we can bring them here and we've done that in the past. So we have that as in our bailiwick if we need to use that. So we're trying to find local folks who, uh, have those language abilities and, uh, licensure and credentials to be able to, to, uh, teach in our DLI program. However, if, uh, if that doesn't work out, then we do have a backup.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Good job. I, I'm sure we've all seen the advertisements of KSL's, uh, news thing that they're coming out with on the tug-of-war with, uh, teachers. And it is, it's real. It is real and I, I know that we're all.
To give you an idea of, uh, when we go to the colleges in-state, um, the number of people going into the programs has decreased by, um, I would say across the state about sixty to seventy percent. And out of the people that actually finish the program, it's actual, uh, less no, lesser number of that, probably fifty percent actually complete of that, that number. So what has been said here earlier is absolutely true. So what has been said here earlier is absolutely true throughout the country. So it needs, you know, we're addressing it through negotiations at the state level, hopefully with the legislature. But then it's a nationwide problem, so we'll, we'll see what other funding avenues we can come up with, but anyway.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Dr. Ed Dalton here from the Twill Education Foundation with our semi-annual report. It was very good.
Well, thank you, President Manzio and to all the members of the, the school board. It's always nice to meet with you and have a chance to give you a brief progress report on the operations of the foundation. And yes, you received a fairly comprehensive written report, but I would like to address two or three things and maybe you have some questions for me and use this time to our best advantage. You know, golly, I was thinking as I came over, TEF kind of lives in a land of opportunity. It's very interesting that as one thing ends, another thing pops up and there's no end to the opportunities that relate to education. All that change also results in a lot of work. And so on one hand, you're sure grateful for good new ideas and good support and on the other hand, you wonder how are we going to do all this? And that's part of our dilemma. In a way, TEF is, oh hey, a nickel and dime kind of foundation. We don't get gigantic grants. We usually survive on five hundred here and a thousand there and if we can get ten, it's like a gigantic celebration. And we are grateful for every single donation that we receive. I thought, well, I've, I've got to share a little good news because whenever I can receive a six thousand dollar check, it's worth holding, showing, someone celebrating with us that Detroit Diesel just sent over a check for that amount to, will be used with about thirty-four thousand other dollars that we've received to award nearly forty scholarships in the next ten days. To me, that's a big thing because we used to didn't have hardly any of them. And just the thought of high school kids receiving just a little bit of an additional boost to send them off hoping that they really take charge and come back again to be employees and live in our wonderful communities. That is sure good. I want you to know that our Stampin' Up project has just gone so well this year. Goodness, between Wendy, Chris and Tiffany Day, who've been coordinating that, right now the warehouse is just pretty much empty and without a single bit of waste. It's been an amazing thing. Wanted to add with the scholarships, this year this over fourteen thousand dollars came in to support the FFA scholarships. That's the first time we've ever tried that and that's more money than we've raised for a particular scholarship in a single year than any other year. The others, though, are, are going fine too. We've been pretty thrilled with the Clothes for Kids effort that happened around Christmas. That too was a big deal where several hundred kids received special gifts right before Christmas. Add to that the foods, the fruits, fruits for kids, gosh, that's been a fun project. Usually eight schools every month. One day a month, looked forward to a special apple, a plum, a tangerine. This month it was a special kind of banana which they really liked. And it's not just about bananas and things like that. It's learning about geography, fruits, nutrition, health, wellness. Maybe these kids will develop habits and they'll eat a lot better when they grow up than I find I'm doing. But anyway, those are some of the few things I wanted to just kind of mention. I also wanted to, gosh, express appreciation to Karen, who serves as your director on our board. Kathy, for your efforts in our OFER committee work, that was greatly appreciated. To other district office staff who helped with that. To all the, the school board members, the entire education family, who feel like we're a part of it and are grateful to be counted amongst the educators in the school district. I want to stress that hey, you add up all the money, well, I guess it's probably over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars right now and by the end of our fiscal year, it'll be close to a couple hundred thousand. But when we add up the non-cash and in-kind contributions, that exceeds over a million dollars a year now. And that does not include the time or other things related to facilities, equipment, people, their values. You talk about valuing, how do you value? Well, it's just a big number of, and it's good for those who are the recipients of it. But it's also wonderful for all those folks who are so generous in giving it, time, money and many other things. I just, I'm happy that the foundation is in a position where it can sort of facilitate and make some of those things happen. We have truly become an organization that fills little niches of opportunity and in our efforts to enrich and enhance education in all Twill County schools. Now, Kendall, I'm excuse Kendall tonight. He's up at a viewing that he needs to be at. But he's just sure been a, a great, yep, right there, counselor, helper, hard worker. I also want to inform you and invite Tiffany, if you'll come up here with me for just a minute. I think many of you know Tiffany Day. Tiffany, she's kind of like an ever-ready battery at West Elementary School, PTA and so many other things. Our work in the Stampin' Up, but she has agreed to come on board as a part of our little leadership team to work on a part-time basis and to fill some of the special needs that we have. And so I just want you to meet her, know her and if you see her around, you'll.
You're great at posting on Facebook.
Sure am.
I always appreciate that.
And has many, many other wonderful talents. And so Tiffany, thank you for joining us and being here tonight. Okay? Let me kind of wrap this up with a comment or two about OFER, okay? Because in a way, running a fast-growing foundation's one thing, then adding on the OFER kind of work is quite another. It's created two big centers of work, of opportunity and I think we are navigating that pretty well. We've had a lot of different meetings. We're now taking reservations for the recreation side. When I talk about it, I look at it as an OFER Canyon Education Center consisting of a park with recreation use and tremendous educational potential. A historic site with tourism efforts and interest and great educational potential. And then there's, well, a lot of other miscellaneous OFER-related things that the judge kind of threw your way that need to be identified and ironed out and in a way so that we, goodness, have great respect for the community of OFER, the people there. And also though to help advance the education work that the school district wants. And so, yeah, the calendars are there, the guidelines are there. Goodness, we'll be hopefully having a number of things online soon. It feels like we are making progress, but we sure keep getting little surprises. There are opportunities disguised.
You certainly have a good attitude about that.
Let me just conclude. By goodness, are there any questions that you have for me though?
I, I do have just a question, maybe a little bit more about OFER. I don't know, as I read your report, I was, I guess I should specify first, you don't have a large staff.
Yeah.
Paid staff. I know you have a lot of volunteer hours and I appreciate that, but with the addition of OFER, I was a little concerned, I guess, that it's putting a lot on your paid staff. Will we be able to get to a point where OFER is more self-sufficient, where we can actually maybe pay for additional staff to take care of OFER? I mean, I feel bad for you guys that you've taken on this big, huge thing and it's become a big, huge thing and you're not, I mean, you're already working full-time basically.
As part-time employees.
As part-time employees.
But, no.
Education, it's wonderful.
Marissa, no, thank you. You know, the, I think the, the hope, the vision was that the OFER opportunity would provide a tremendous opportunity from an educational standpoint. Also provide an opportunity for the foundation perhaps to raise some funds that were unrestricted to do the very things you're talking about. Because even though all our financial information looks really good, a large, large percentage of that is all restricted for various projects, so we really can't spend much of it. And I think we're learning that it's unlikely we'll ever have enough excess revenue over expenses related to recreation to really do a whole lot. We've got to have a vision to create the educational enhancements that are valuable and can be paid for through fees or in other ways and turn it from a recreation-focused place to an education-focused place. If we can do that, it will all work out.
Mr. Dalton, didn't, didn't, I was under the impression that we did hire someone to, to be up there and, and run the campground for the summer.
Yes. Oh, I mean, every year, OFER would hire what is called a camp host and we went back to those folks and re-enlisted their help. So they're now working with us under Kendall's direction to make the reservations, check people in, check them out, things like that. And, but.
I wanted to take time to thank Steve West and the whole maintenance crew for going up and cleaning up and straightening up all kinds of things, water deals, electricity and buildings. They did a marvelous job. I drove up through there this weekend and it was great, Steve. You have really done a great job, you and your group.
Absolutely, to them and many others. And goodness, we're also having scout groups, Eagle Projects, number of folks that are coming in for cleanup things. And hopefully that will work. Now, as I'm, in terms of the workload, that will be something we're going to have to just keep looking at and addressing because, well, it's, it's getting harder to do it, you bet. Thank you for just knowing that. Yeah. Well, with that then, gosh, thank you very much for letting me make this report and appreciate all your help and that of the staff, everyone too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And while you're up here, before you sit down, I, Scott just motioned to me that you are also item number eight point two on the agenda. If nobody is opposed, we can just do that while you're up here too.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, so that is donation of a half interest in pickup truck to OFER Water Association. Do you have anything to say about it or you just, it's.
Well, goodness.
It's pretty self-explanatory.
I can say this, that they'll sure be thrilled because now it can be licensed and used and they own the other half and so they weren't really sure what to do. But if you can make that come back together, that is a wonderful gesture of appreciation.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion. Do we do what's necessary to get the dump truck running and licensed and whatever it takes? You know, give us the directions and we'll see it gets done.
By donating it to the water association.
Donate the half interest to the water.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Karen to donate the half of the truck to the OFER Water Association.
We want to make it a whole truck.
That'll make it a whole truck so they can get it licensed, like you said. Any discussion to that motion?
I just need clarity.
Go ahead.
Kathy said in her motion to get it up and running, or we're not, that's not included in this. It's, it's just donating half the truck, right?
Right.
I just want to be.
Yeah.
Right.
We can't run unless we got both halves.
So they're going to be able to make it run when they have the whole truck. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And tomorrow night at their meeting, I'll make that announcement from you and that'll be a wonderful news for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks Tiffany for coming too. Okay, Steve West, Operations Director, we have an update on our construction projects.
And wow.
They look great.
They look great. It looks really good.
They're coming along really nicely. We're, we're pleased with those two buildings and where we're at with them. We're excited, Old Mill. We're, we're just a month from, from being, moving into that building and getting, setting up and ready for students. So things are coming very nicely down there. Today they started laying out the flooring in the gym. It just takes a whole different look when the flooring goes in, the places get cleaned out. Weather's held us up a little bit on asphalt this last little bit. We're getting a little too much rain. So it's snow in winter, rain.
It's better than snow.
But as soon as that dries out, we will be getting the asphalt there. But we're planning, we'll move our, move our custodian in there right after Memorial Day. And we have furniture coming the twenty-third and we're moving full forward and getting that school set up and ready for school next year, so.
Looks great.
It's looking good. Thank you.
It looks great.
Up at Sterling, because of demo, it's a little bit further behind. Had a very fun, unique thing happen with Patrick Wiggins. He happened to be flying one day. Shot a couple of pictures and I thought, that's pretty cool. So you can really see some good difference between the two buildings.
It was funny, his comment though, like, not so sure what's happening at the others, you know, like he didn't quite get that it wasn't.
Yeah. But they are, classroom wings are pretty much done. They're, they're, they're looking nice. Totally different looks on those two buildings. Even though we think they're the same, they're not. There's a lot of difference there, but we're, we're on track and on schedule on that too and it's, it's exciting up there too, so. Our other, other, other bond projects, you notice at Twill High School, there's a little bit of asphalt and rubber missing over there in a few buildings. So that's, that's under full swing and we, we appreciate the support of Twill High School staff and letting us get as early a start on that as we could so we can get that done and moving forward with that. We're also doing, in the initial phase of the weight room addition to Grantsville High School. We're working with the architects. We're meeting with the staff again this week on some conceptual drawings to get started on, on that project. And we're just starting some conceptual drawings on Twill Junior High School so we can see what we're going to do with that project. Our capital projects, we're working diligently and I was just noticing that the update sheet didn't make the board packet and I apologize. But we have, we've been laying a lot of cement around the schools and getting those little projects completed. We're in the process of getting bids right now to replace the curtains on the stage at Grantsville High School. We got the stage resurfaced and we're, we're moving forward with that. So we're working diligently to try to get those finished up before the start of the next year's projects on that, so. And I think that's.
You're next for Capital Outlay too. So are there other questions about the construction? If not, then we can go right into Capital Outlay two thousand seventeen, eighteen.
All right. This is a little bit more adept than just, just the updated report. This is our third reading. We've been through it several times and hence that. We have a couple of major projects that we need to look at doing this year. Some safety ones from fire sprinkler repairs at Grantsville Junior High School, replace it in the old part of the building. We have the sewer line problems at Twill Junior High School we're addressing. We're still researching exactly how we're going to accomplish that. We're still looking into either lining them or rerouting them around the building to, to do that. It's not quite as easy because all those sewer lines that we're having troubles with are about eight to twelve feet underneath the main part of the building. So we're working through how we're going to do that and work that. We're going to try to get those repaired this summer if we can get that, so.
Steve, did they come in under the office from the parking lot area? Is that how they come into the building?
It comes, it, it starts down in the kitchen and runs from the kitchen to the north of the building and then it runs out the north wing to the parking lot, back to the east and then back to Vine Street from there. So our area, we have, our most trouble is, is all that grease over all the years is eroded, the inside of that pipe from the kitchen to the office. And so we've got some really bad. And so we've got some really bad, bad spots on it, some thin spots. It catches anything that gets hung up down, down that pipe and we're getting backups a lot, so. We're looking at, there's two or three companies that are out there that can go in and line it. The lining is really a, a slick thing. You go in and you, you, you push it through and it's a balloon. We have to power wash and clean it first. Blows it out, and then it puts a coating on the inside of that pipe that'll last for another thirty years. Only drawback is the first one we found, you have to do it at every intersection, you have to dig it up. And so that's digging it up underneath the office. We're looking at some others that think they may not have to dig it up to accomplish that, so where we can get access in the tunnels, we, we're gonna work through that and see what we can do. So, and we've put a list together on there of possible future bond projects from this. And our recommendation of projects for, for that and a draft budget for the year.
So you're looking for an approval?
We are tonight.
Are there any questions about what's been presented? If not, I'd look for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve the projects that Steve's working on and contemplating doing.
For next year.
For twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Kathy, seconded by Ellen to approve the Capital Outlay projects for two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and one nay, so one, two, five, eight, eyes and one nay. Motion carries.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we did eight point two. Um, eight point three, human sexuality curriculum approval and yearly board report.
Okay, for your information, um, our, uh, human sexuality curriculum committee membership is going to stay the same next year as it was this year. Um, and Mayor Beazer's gonna be our chair and I'll be the co-chair. I'm looking forward to that. We also have an updated, uh, approval, uh, materials approved list on our webpage under teaching and learning, and that's just for information. Um, for approval, when we met last, there were two items that were brought before us. The first one is the health department asked that for Health One, the, uh, pre and post-test that they give be updated. Basically, they wanted the formatting updated and they actually took off some of the questions, and so what was left, they just wanted to be, uh, safe. Even though we had previously approved the, the prior one, they wanted to make sure that this one was approved also. So that's the pre and the post-test. And then also, um, at Twilla High School, the psychology teacher recognized that his materials were not on the list. And he had been approved like eight years ago, but everything has to be reevaluated every so often, and so, um, he submitted his materials to be reviewed again and to be approved, and those were the PowerPoints that he's put together. And then the two textbooks, and the, uh, human sexuality curriculum committee looked through the textbooks and looked through the PowerPoints and found everything to be medically accurate and appropriate for the audience at hand. And so we're asking that you approve those two items.
All right. Anyone who wanna make that motion?
I move that we approve the updated pre and post tests for using eighth grade health class and approve the textbooks and teacher-created materials for use in psychology.
I think, do we have to add AP Psychology also, or is just Psychology good enough?
I think Psychology would work.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Karen, seconded by Kathy to approve the updated pre and post tests for use in the eighth grade health class and approve the textbooks and teacher-created materials for use in Psychology. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. You didn't bring them for us to read.
The pu- the books? Yeah, I read the PowerPoint.
Yeah.
I read some of them, but I didn't wanna read that for Psychology books.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, revised policy five zero three two Wellness and Nutrition, first read, um, Steve West and Jennifer Atherton, just Jennifer Atherton, whoever you wanna do it? Okay, do it together.
So we have a local wellness policy and the state and USDA has changed their requirements that need to be, um, in this policy, so. Um, basically, we have added to the policy that there needs to be a triennial, triennial assessment and it needs to be made to the public. Um, the required stakeholders have changed. We're adding students, school health professionals, school board and the public. Participation of public meetings need to be advertised, um, via email or flyers. And then meeting minutes and agendas will be made available to the public. I also, while I was in revising this policy, um, cleaned up the area that pertains to Smart Snacks. So that it's a little more, um, readable and it's not so much information, um, so that, you know, it's understandable. So this is the first read and
I had a question about that, since the law is, since apparently that's gonna change again.
Right.
Um, will we just change it again, or are we?
Yes, um, they haven't, the state of Utah hasn't, they said that nothing is going to change as of yet. Um, they'll let us know before school starts, they said. Um, but as of now, this is what the USDA wants us to put in our policies, so.
My son did a little happy dance at our, at our house.
I know. They're, they're, they're thinking about making a lot of changes, so it's good.
All right, so, um, you want this to go for a second reading?
I move that, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the revised language for policy five zero three two Wellness and Nutrition for a second reading.
There's a second.
I'll second.
So moved by Carol and seconded by Kathy to approve the revised language for policy five zero three two Wellness and Nutrition for a second reading. Any discussion to that motion? Yes, Mr. Ryan.
Help me understand and, and I'm probably not, I'm, maybe I'm reading it too literally. Just more for the next time it comes up. Under the selling food items, under section F, number two. This is, I think the second sentence says elementary and secondary schools may not sell competitive, competitive foods, all foods outside of the federal, if they do not wait, oh, I'm wrong, lying. Okay. Shall be unhealthy. Now I can't find it.
What was it about?
Well, the question is, it's, I read it literally that it says you can't sell any of these foods at any time.
You can't during school hours.
But, but that's the part, the way the commas read, it, it, I questioned that we could, you could even sell the way it was written, or at least my interpretation of that was even like during halftime at a basketball game that you could sell.
It's from midnight until three thirty P, uh, three thirty PM.
But I guess my point was, and I can, I see, I can't find it.
So you're thinking just the
The verbiage, yeah, was, was such that it, it gave me a different impression and now, of course, I can't find it. I was reading it two seconds before I said it. It, it, I mean, if you read literally, that's second, that is a sentence. Elementary and secondary s- secondary schools may not sell competitive foods. All foods outside of the federal reimbursable mill, if they do not meet minimum Smart Star, Smart Snacks in school standards. It doesn't say during a timeframe.
Yeah, so the federal reimbursable mill is during school.
Oh, so that's encompassed.
They can't reimburse us unless, yes, they can't reimburse us unless it's during, you know, a school breakfast or school lunch.
That's not what I read.
Right, and I can revise it to, to be more specific.
Because the layman probably wouldn't understand that that's what it means.
Yeah, and I can revise it to
And on the layman, and I read that that says, gee, we can't sell popcorn at halftime. I mean, that's what I read.
Maybe if it doesn't have butter on it.
We can't sell water either.
That's a good, I think that's a
I can definitely revise that to say, um, between the hours of midnight and three thirty PM during the school day.
Or just put a definition of, uh, that's the definition of federal reimbursable bills, or whatever works, whatever makes it flow.
I just wanna make sure that we don't outlaw, you know,
Everything during school.
During refreshments, concessions, particularly.
Do you want me to?
I will amend my motion.
Well, it's just a second reading.
It's a second reading, and so when they bring it back, that's fine.
I wanna bring it back, just make sure that it's
Cause at least we can get it out there and
Okay.
That's a question. Go ahead, Karen.
So do we currently sell soda in our schools?
Not during lunch or breakfast, so from midnight until three thirty.
Not during the school hours.
No, we cannot.
No candy.
We can sell candy as long as it's Smart Snack approved. So the vending machines can be on and we can sell diet soda at the high schools, we can sell juices, um, things like that, but they have
Diet soda's terrible.
I know it is, but this is just the regulations coming from
That's what I'm saying, I can't wait for it to change.
Says carbonated and/or flavored beverages, so that would mean not even diet. No, I mean, if, again, that's what it says. And if we want to say diet, then we need to change that verbiage.
I can look at it, so. I'll make sure that it's on the third read.
I, I think the biggest thing that I see out there that we're, we might have struggles with schools is they sell cookies during the day.
There's a lot of schools, you can get an exemption three times a year to sell, to have bake sales or fundraisers, but it's three times a year per school. So there's a lot of schools that are out of compliance right now and I plan on addressing, um, the principals at their, um, August.
Okay, so I know that our schools are not in compliance with that, uh, I'm a mom, so I know, but I totally disagree with this. So what is the, so what happens if we don't approve it?
Yeah, exactly.
Um, then we're going against USDA requirements.
And what happens?
And we don't receive funding for our
Do we forfeit?
We forfeit funding for
Do we forfeit all of our s- funding, or like what part of our funding do you know?
Um, so, we would have to forfeit, so we get, we get free money from the state for free lunches.
Well, yeah.
We get money for, we get money from the state for free, for free lunches.
Could you tell us how much? Next time.
Yeah, could you? Yeah, I can.
Because if it's not very much, I'm willing to give it up.
But dinner, if they bring their soda, you don't purchase it in the school.
Right.
They can still eat it with their lunch during lunch hour, or they can drink it with
They just can't compete with us.
You just can't purchase it in the school during those hours, but if you got it purchased before, you can drink it for breakfast or lunch.
Yeah, I can find out what the
So, go ahead, Carol. Um, is it somebody's going to file a complaint that you're not in compliance? How, I mean, they're gonna come around and they're, I mean, how, so you're not in compliance?
So the state does an administrative, um, review and they go to, um, certain schools that they choose. And if we're not in compliance, they'll say, okay, we're not gonna fund any of your money.
That, I mean, it's that cut and dry, or is it, okay, we're writing you up, you need to be in compliance within?
If it's over six hundred dollars, then, then they will, they will not give us any money back.
If not, they give you a period of time to change.
Like, this year's annual review or administrative review was, um, they came out at the first of March and we had to be compliant by, and show them what we were gonna do to be in compliance by May fifteenth, so thus, they didn't really give us a lot of time. But I can find out the, the dollar amount. I'll be happy to do that.
I am, I'm afraid it's gonna be more than we're willing to give up, but I'd like to know. We're not picking on you.
I, I know, I know.
Welcome to the, your first presentation at a board meeting.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to find out.
And, and we'd love it if the federal law changed.
Well, I know there was just that they struck down that administrative rule. Um, but you know how long that, things like that take.
Right. And it has to go through public comment.
Right.
The, this, we're forming a committee that says it has to, it used to meet twice a year, how come we moved to three? Is that a mandate too?
It's a mandate. And now, yeah.
Okay, well, I think we have a motion on the table to move it forward for a second reading, which I think, um, we need to vote on. But if you could bring back some more information for us and add those minor changes for next time, then that would be great.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jennifer. Thanks, Steve. Um, multi, revised policy five zero four zero multimedia content.
All right, um, so, based on some feedback that we received, uh, we wanted to take a look at this policy. And as we were looking through it, we felt that there needed to be some, uh, some changes made. First, we, we have not had a district-approved list of movies. Um, now, we felt instead of, of holding on to that piece, instead of having a, uh, a district-approved list, we felt that it would be, it would probably be best to have, if, if they are going to show, uh, a film movie in a class, that that be part of the curriculum guide that, that is written for each course in our district. So in, uh, let's see, that's under Sorry, I lost my place here. Okay, under four D. Uh, an educator who wants to show a movie, oh, no, no, no. I lost it there. Did somebody say F?
I thought it was F, maybe?
Yeah, let's see. All right, anyway, so what we decided was we wanted to make sure that it was in the approved district curriculum guide under resources and materials, so a- actually, uh, four D. Uh, an educator who wants to show a movie or video, uh, not downloaded from USOE or UEN and not on the, the approved district curriculum guide under resources and materials must ensure that the following criteria are met, so. Um, we also wanted to add a few criteria in there in, uh, in the prior policy. There was nothing about advocacy of drug or alcohol use as, as a prohibitor. Now, there, there are some video clips that could be used to show negativity of, of underage drinking and, uh, and drug use, and, and so that's why we wanted the word advocacy of in there, so, so that would be a prohibitor there. Um, you know, based on what you guys have seen, are there any questions? I mean, it, it's definitely not perfect right now. We, we would recommend that it moves forward for a second reading. Um, as I was reading through, uh, you know, second and third time, there, there are some things that, that I still would like to, um, to play around with and get some clarification on and, and get some feedback from schools. Um, as, uh, as I met, um, I met with, uh, with Trish Baldwin, um, who is over curriculum. And, uh, tried to meet with Chantel, but she had, uh, a lot of meetings going on, so she wasn't able to come and meet with, uh, with the two of us, but um, really, what we wanted to do was make sure that, that we were leaving it open to have some powerful, um, multimedia in classrooms, but not so wide open that we were just showing movies to show movies.
Does anybody have questions? I have a question. If not. Um, so, that was one of my questions, is I thought that we were only, we were maybe not supposed to show full-length films, but more like clips or sections of films.
Yes.
But to me, when I read it and it says a movie or video, that implies
Yes.
Movie, the whole thing to me.
Yes, and, and so one piece that, that I did wanna correct and, and in my notes on here, I've got, uh, on that section D, a, an educator who wants to show a multimedia clip, and I think we would need to define what a multimedia clip would be. You know, a certain percentage of, of the overall movie or, um, you know, wha- whatever that would be. A- and get away from the full-length movies. Now, um, in, in my discussion with, uh, with, um, Patricia Baldwin, uh, she has mentioned that we do have three movies built into, uh, curriculum for Language Arts that, uh,
Go with the book.
That go with, yeah, go with the book and, and meet state standards and, and really truly do enhance the instructional value of what they're trying to do in the classroom, and so i- if done in conjunction with what they're doing to meet state standards. Um, you know, that, that's great, and that's why we want them to be built within that, the, the curriculum guide. So we know that, that yes, it is built in and meets, um, the standards and objectives that we are supposed to be teaching our children.
And then also, um, if we're saying multimedia clips, I, I assume there are many things available on USOE or UEN to a teacher, but could, is, is it possible to have a list sitting, is, I mean, what, do they just send it in and get it approved and then it goes on the list? Cause there are a million, a billion multimedia clips out there on YouTube and whatever, and how could you even possibly have a list?
Yeah, I, so, so having a list, I, I, I think we would, we would start off with, with a, a manageable list and then that list would grow and grow and grow to the point where it was tremendously large, uh, we
I hope it's searchable.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the maintenance of that list and, and the oversight of that list becomes big. Uh, and, and that's why, instead of just saying, hey, we'll have a list, we, we thought what we'd do is, like I said, you know, have, have the pieces incorporated within the curriculum guide. And then also, um, the old policy did have some language in there that, that we do need to play around with a little bit more, but uh, some language in there that allowed for, hey, if it's not in the curriculum guide and it's not downloaded from USOE or UEN, um, here's the standards. and it's not downloaded from USOE or UEN, um here's the standards that, that it needs to meet.
I like that.
How is it, I don't know, maybe it's so much trouble you could never do it and keep it on record, but if they're gonna use them and they put them together and they have a review committee that looks at them, and once they're approved, they're on a list, then anybody in the school or another school, if you put them on a district list, could use them.
Yeah, I'm just saying there'd be a billion.
Supposed to be curriculum, and we, a lot of us do all the same curriculum, so if there was a way to review them and put them on a list, it would help to stop a lot of problems.
I mean, I could go on YouTube and search something and find a hundred just right there, then probably most applicable, you know?
Yeah, and, and for, uh the, the reason, the reason I have a hard time with a list is because, you know, something that, that I would use in, in my classroom that fits my personality, my instruction model, doesn't, you know, doesn't for, for say another teacher, or um, and, you know, we're, we are all teaching the same standards and objectives, but, but we, we do have individuals in the classroom who, um, you know, we, we hire them because they are experts at, at what they do, and, and we want to, um, you know, we want, we want to give them.
Sometimes how there'll be one that's really good, and it meets more than just Johnny's two or three other teachers, that we didn't even think of that, and then we see it and say, oh god, that would really be great with this unit I'm doing. So I think it could be beneficial, just to say you have to use them, but it might make a creative area that would save us all a lot of problems and still really do a good job teaching. Teachers are the best thieves they are. If you go somewhere and see something that works, you're stealing it and taking it home.
Okay. This is the first read, so we need to at least get it out there and go for, for a second reading, right?
Yes.
And so you'll add your cleanup that you're.
Yes.
Taking some of these comments considerations, I guess. Is there a motion to approve this for a second reading?
Are we all asleep?
I move that we bring back the policy fifty forty multimedia content for a second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's moved by Karen and seconded by Kathy to approve uh revisions, policy five zero four zero multimedia contact for a second reading. Any discussions of that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, policy six zero zero nine grounds for mandatory suspension or expulsion, second reading.
Alright, and uh, so I, I tried to take the uh, the language that was proposed and, and ideas that were proposed last time and incorporate them into uh the policy. I know we, we felt that number one was, um, you know, as we were listening, everything, that, that it got a little repetitive. And so I, I took some of those things out and, and basically just said, or any object used to cause harm to another individual would be considered a weapon, so. Any questions, concerns, comments on that one?
I still think, I, I know you added an E, uh who commits a violation involving a weapon either real or pretend. I still think it needs to go up in B also.
Okay.
Because it says, any serious violation occurring in a school building or in or on school property or in conjunction with any school activity, including the possession of a pretend weapon, explosive or noxious or flammable material. I think right there it probably should say of a real or pretend, or of a weapon, both real and pretend, or whatever.
Okay, yep, I, I see where you're saying.
You caught it down. In E, but it needs to be in a, B also.
Oh, and you know what, I. On my copy that I printed, it actually has of a real or pretend.
Oh, maybe mine didn't update.
Yeah, I, you know what, I probably sent.
At last times.
The wrong, well, no, this is, this has a lot of changes on it. What I did was, as I was working on the policy, I would read through it, I would work on it a little bit, I would step away from it, do something else, and then come back to it and save separate copies. I bet what I did was I sent the wrong copy forward, so, but yeah, so I will circle the real or pretend. Um, so you, you're saying it should read, uh, including the possession of a real or pretend weapon, explosive or noxious or flammable materials.
Yeah.
So, yep, that's, um, yeah, I, I will get that put back in there.
Were there other changes you made that we don't have?
Uh, let me look here, so looking at what I've got in my printed copy.
Do you know what, it's short, can you just read it to us?
Yeah, I, I sure can. Okay, a student shall be suspended or expelled from school for any of the following reasons. A, any serious violation affecting another student or staff member. B, any serious violations occurring in a school building in or on school property or in conjunction with any school activity, including the possession of a real or pretend weapon, explosive or noxious or flammable materials under UCA fifty-three A dash three dash five oh two. Number one, weapons may include but are not, but are not limited to firearms, knives, explosives, fireworks, chemical devices, or any other object used to cause harm to another individual. If a pretend weapon is necessary for a school-approved program, criminal justice competition, comma, drill teams, school play, et cetera, written approval will be given by the pri- uh, by the principal prior to the use of the pretend weapon. Use of the pretend weapon will occur only under the direct supervision of the program advisor slash teacher. While not in use, all pretend weapons will be securely stored. C, the possession, sale, control, or distribution of a drug or controlled substance as defined in UCA fifty-eight dash thirty-seven dash two, an imitation controlled substance defined in UCA fifty-eight dash thirty-seven B dash two, or drug paraphernalia as defined in UCA fifty-eight dash thirty-seven A dash three. The commission of an act involving the use of force or threatened use of force, which if committed by an adult would be a felony or class A misdemeanor. Um, a student who commits a violation of this section involving a weapon either real or pretend, explosive or flammable material shall be expelled from school for a period of not less than one year, unless the district superintendent determines on a case-by-case basis that a lesser penalty would be more appropriate. A suspension or expulsion under this se- uh section is not subject to the age limitations under UCA subsection fifty-three A dash eleven dash one oh two one. Now, under the, under the, or, or I, just rereading that, I think what we need to do is unless the district superintendent or in parentheses designate.
Yeah, you're right.
Alright, did we see any other, okay, so it looks like that's just the uh, the only change that, that I made in that next read-through.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve policy six zero zero nine, grounds for mandatory suspension or expulsion as read by Mr. Strain with the addition of or designate.
Perfect. Is there a second? It's been moved by Karen and seconded by Ellen to approve uh, policy six zero zero nine grounds for mandatory suspension or expulsion as read by Mr. Strain with the addition of or designate um for implementation. Did I get it right? Okay, um, any discussions of that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, very good, I, I think that's a record for me.
Oh yeah, you're here for the whole night.
I, I, I got a policy approved in two readings, so.
Congratulations, the next one's not so easy.
No, so, um, yes, yes, this is, this is our reboot. Um, and we liked the topic so much, we decided instead of going with one policy to look at two, so, um.
It makes more sense.
It does make more sense, yeah.
Now, keep in mind, these, these next two policies, do you, do you guys mind if I address these two together?
No, go ahead.
To start this, this first time. So keep in mind, these two are very, very, very raw. Um, these, uh, this i- is not something that I, I think we, we can just jump into and implement this in the way it's written right now. Um, this is a, a slight adaptation of Washa- uh Wasatch School District's policy, um, their policies uh over to us. And in the uh, um, in the one that was initially included in the board packet, I, I actually still had a phone number for Wasatch District, and we, we got that changed, but it's not formatted now, so. So, um, with that in mind, there, there are a few things that, that I do think need to be discussed and, and decided on. I, I am not sure about the um attendance uh citizenship credit being used towards graduation. I, I know, I mean, that, that was in Wasatch's policy, that was something that, that I did receive some positive feedback on. So I included it in this, but I, I do think it's something that if we feel strongly about that, that I need to do some pretty deep research into to make sure that, that really this is legally what we.
Can do.
Can do and should do, so. So if that's the case, I can, I can look into that if we feel strongly about keeping it in there, and um I, I can look at, at the legalities of that. Another piece, so let's, uh, in the high school attendance policy. We, we have under uh philosophy, so section A, um right below that, um so, it, it's, oh let me. Mine is formatted differently on, on here than what you guys are looking at. Okay, actually, yeah.
We have your unformatted one too.
So the unformatted one, B. Um, so, A philosophy, and then down B. Um, it says, attendance is part of our citizenship policy um in order to graduate. Now, if we decide to keep that, um it was suggested by, uh, I, I think it was Board President Manzioon that, that that, is that the one you were talking about having in the other policy as well?
Um, no.
The, okay.
Oh, maybe. Well, if we're gonna have it, it applies for both. If we're not gonna have it, then we take it out of both, right?
Attendance policy and the citizenship policy. If we're gonna have it, we probably.
I sent that to you hours ago.
I understand. So, uh, if, if that's the case, if, if we decide to keep that, um, then, then I do think we would need to add that to the citizenship policy as well. Um, under B, on the attendance policy, it talks about uh attendance standards, um. Section A, it says if a student exceeds a combination of five absences and or tardies. Now, with that, um, are we wanting to, to keep that? Or are we wanting to separate it out like we've had in our policy in the past where it's three unexcused absences? This one doesn't even bring up it, or bring up unexcused. It just says five absences or tardies. So, if that's the case, um.
I, well, I was gonna say, I don't think legally you can just, I think un- I think parent unexcused, I think it has to be unexcused.
And, and so, um, do we wanna have the combined five unexcused absences a- and tardies together?
Other.
Three and two would make five, and so the, the kid's got the U, or do we wanna say, like our current, um, current procedure that, that our high schools are using, three unexcused absences or five tardies? So.
I'm like that.
I'm okay with that. Anybody else? I mean, Karen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say leave it and then if, as we get feedback, I mean, unless something, somebody feels.
Well, it seemed like the report we got were that a lot of kids couldn't, were having a hard time making up their use for graduation.
Make it more strict, we'll either have, we'll either fix it, fix the problem, or it'll get worse, I don't know.
Yeah.
I wonder too about the May first deadline. Is that realistic?
That's currently the deadline.
Oh, is it?
No?
No, they're, they're actually letting kids make it up, up until like minutes before graduation.
They have to be, they have to have graduation requirements met by May eighteen.
Yeah, they.
Before graduation.
Yes, but, but they, but they are letting kids make up um use.
Till the twenty-fifth?
Until, yeah, I mean, they're.
Well, 'cause we want people to go to graduation.
Because you want kids to walk.
So why?
It's something they burn.
Why are we saying May first?
Well, uh, because that's, that's what the Wasatch policy said, and so like I said, I, I very loosely, I just pulled it and adapted it, so.
That's there, then we need to enforce it. If we're not gonna enforce May first, then we put the date we are gonna enforce. Because this sends a double message.
Yeah.
Yes.
So one kid thinks he can't do it because he's passed the thing, and the other kid says he's got till then, because they're letting him do it.
And like I said, this is a very rough draft, and so, um, we just wanted uh your input. So which, which policy is that one in and where, what section?
It's on the, um. Citizenship grade.
Changing grade maybe.
Oh, we're going back and forth.
I know.
I, I don't believe, I think we have gotten directive in the past, that you can keep a child from participating in the graduation ceremony, but you cannot legally withhold a diploma.
Yeah, they can't go through the graduation.
Well, that makes sense to me.
Give them a diploma.
Makes sense.
And, and I understand I wasn't in the, the last meeting, but I'm having, and, and maybe that's for the better in this conversation. Because I, I, I'm not coming with a different, I mean, from that perspective, but maybe, I, I was very confused as to why. I'm confused about lots, I'm having a hard time articu- articulating it, but. Is the U attendance or the UA going in the citizenship grade spot? It is, isn't it?
Yes.
So then, my confusion comes in as to why we're having two policies that are addressing the same thing. It would seem like to me that it's a subsection defining what UA is, and, and, and in fact, all that verbiage around attendance is appropriate defining that UA, but I'm having a hard time to understand. Well, we have a policy on all the grades that go in the citizenship category, but, but the UA gets its own policy when in fact it's going on the report card in the same section as those others. Does, I mean, and kind of from the parental or an outside perspective, it would seem like to me that that would all be part of the same conversation around citizenship grading, and that part of that should be, that perfectly appropriate, everything that you've got there. But i- i- it seems really strange to me that we have all this dialogue about citizenship grades. Oh yeah, and by the way, there's this UA, but you have to go to a totally different policy to find out about it. That, that makes absolutely no sense from, uh, it probably made a lot of sense when you all had this conversation the other night. But if you were just pulling it up as a parent on the website, that would just like, why?
Well, I think in Mr. Strain's defense, we had, I don't know, about a two-hour conversation, it seemed like.
I.
It, it really wasn't that long, I don't think, but it seemed quite that, it seemed like that long, about the, the policy that we had um, talked about for, I don't know, seventeen weeks, and um, we just couldn't make it work. And so in his defense, he basically said, let me bring you back some other policies and let's start over. So I don't know that any of us have really a problem with combining them into one, but we need to maybe first flesh out what we want. 'Cause Mr. Strain was really like, I don't even know what you're asking me for.
And, and part of the reason is.
And rightfully so.
And, well, and I guess it kind of.
Not to words in your mouth.
That is that, we, we talked about making up both the U and the UA in the attendance version. But there's no description of making up a U in the citizenship grading section, which is where the U came from.
Yeah.
You see, I, back to why I'm struggling that we've dissected.
Yeah.
And that, that's just, that's my two bits, and I, I'm not trying to make it more work. I, I, I like the verbiage actually, but I just think it needs to be woven into a single, I, that's my.
Yeah, if, if, if you guys would like, I can, I can easily put the two into one policy. Um, I can, I, we can change whatever you'd like to change in this. I mean, this is, um, I, I want, I wanna make sure we get something that, that is going to fit what, what you guys want, what is best for our kids. You know, I, I think, uh, I think in the other policy, we um, we, we bogged down a little bit with, in, in the last few discussions, and so I, I, I really think, you know, coming up fresh with something new and um, and if we wanna merge the two, great. If we want to merge pieces of the two and, and leave other pieces out. If we wanna change pieces, or if we wanna scrap this altogether and, and find something else, I, I'm fine.
And run screaming and let it go.
I will, I will do what you would like.
I, and you guys can all comment too. I really like these. I like, I think they're more clean than we, and I like that they include what we talked about with the UA. I have no problem combining them into one, I don't have a problem with that. It was just that what we had before didn't work.
I'll tell you what I really like in this, is I like the paragraph that shows about the involvement and support of parents and guardians is critical in the process of promoting and developing. And we have to communicate with the school when they have questions or concerns. And we have to communicate with the school when they have questions or concerns. We have to be sure that the parents and guardians are expected to understand that this is towards good behavior. And a si- good citizenship grade comes, making a reasonable effort to be aware of behavioral expectations for their students at school through reviewing materials that are sent home, through conferencing with teachers, administrators, and become necessary. I don't think we do very good job of communicating this very paragraph to parents so that they have understanding.
Well, we didn't have that before, and one thing we liked about these is that it had, you know, student, parent, and teacher, and administrator responsibilities.
I really like that paragraph. I like that a lot.
So I think your point is valid. Do you have something to say too?
Yeah, I question the twenty eight credits. Do we want to track citizenship credits?
Yeah. Well, and Dolene's saying, uh Superintendent Pitt, sorry, is saying that perhaps that's probably not in the best, not right, so.
Right.
So scrap that piece. That's, I I am good with scrapping that.
What other clarifications did you need? I mean, you were kinda going through, do you need some other clarifications from us before you?
I had another question.
Okay.
Yes.
The overall citizenship grade. Who is responsible to give the overall citizenship grade?
The overall citizenship grade.
That's not something we talked about, right?
Yeah, so so the way, the way it works right now, and and I think that would be something that that we would have to work out. The way it works right now is the teachers assign citizenship, um if it's behavioral in the classroom. But if it is based on attendance, um each of the schools has their attendance secretary who who inputs that. Um so if a student earns a U, then then the attendance secretary puts that in there. And I I think, um you know, one thing we may want to have in the policy is, um you know, if if a teacher is giving a U. And there's also um attendance, uh a UA, which one is overridden because we can only, we can only put one mark.
Have one.
In um i- in that section, so um I I do think that would have to be addressed as well. If we're gonna have two ways that is.
I can give you another option.
Okay, let's hear it.
U U, and for both, not just. That means they get both the UA and the U, and therefore it's a double U.
Or a U UA?
A W.
A W, there you go.
But right now, they get a citizenship grade in each class.
Won't they still?
Do they not?
Yes.
So that goes in each class, and wouldn't the UA just be, so we're saying that would be separate from those classes, or it was in same spot?
It's per class, yep, per class.
So the question is if, what if they earn both, earn?
Well, a U's a U. If you get a U, you got a U.
Yeah, but what if it's the UA or is it the U? Which one do they get?
Doesn't matter, they have to make them both up.
I like a W.
A U is a U.
No, cause there's only one on the quarter.
Right.
Back to my question on the general citizenship grade.
Sorry.
Citizenship policy, section A philosophy, the last sentence. Student will earn a citizenship grade in each class per term as well as a general citizenship grade.
We don't have that. That's what I'm saying, I don't think we have that.
No, we don't have that, you know.
We only have it per class, unless you're in elementary school.
So why is that in our?
Cause it's copied from another district.
Okay, so we don't want that, right?
Right.
No, cause we don't have that.
Yeah, so we'll want that out of there.
I guess we could implement it, but I don't know, you'd have to take an average.
Yeah, I don't think we want that.
Yeah, I think I, we can just cross that out. Now, also in that citizenship policy, um you know, we we had talked about any time that that a a student receives an N, a U, or a UA. We'd wanna comment in there. In uh, now my numbering on this one is different than yours, guys, it's because you don't have the unformatted one, so we go back to that.
Are we on the citizenship one or the?
Citizenship one, mhm, so let me, uh, let's see.
On C to E.
Yes.
But it doesn't say comment.
It doesn't say comment, that was left out.
But it doesn't say, yes, the word comment isn't on there, so, um, yes, so so we'll put a comment in there.
We need to add comment.
And then under citizenship grade makeup. Um instead of the three hours, we talked about doing just two hours.
That's what we do now, right?
Yep, um.
And I didn't understand why it would be three hours for this one and two hours for the other one.
Yeah, yeah, no, and and so for consistency, I've I've got that written down there, so those are the things that I caught right off. Um is there anything else that you guys have caught? And G five?
Yeah, we'd have to take that out.
Oh, yes, yes.
You would just change it to say participate in graduation ceremonies, right?
And take out May first.
Yes.
May first.
Yep. Okay.
Um. Does it say other activities too? Cause I know it does in the. Cause they can't participate in other activities either, it's not just graduation, right?
Activity eligibility, it says.
It's up there.
Now, what do you guys think of the uh citizenship probation piece? So that would be G three?
I think it's a good idea, but.
I like it, I mean, it kinda.
Does it put more work on administrators, but I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, that's true, I think it's okay. I mean, it just gives it a red flag.
Because then maybe it, especially if we're hearing that we're having a hard time making them up. I mean, if kids are really getting that many U's, then there should be some sort of a conference. Why are we getting that many U's without?
Any other comments on that? Alright, so if I understand right, you guys want me to try and merge the two, which which I will do, and I will get those uh those changes that have been made.
Now, I I have a question, I guess. We we say we're gonna approve it for a second reading, but honestly, I don't know that there's, I don't know what you would post. Do we need to come?
The merged version.
The merged version, can you mer- do that?
And and I think, here, my two bits.
Go ahead.
For Mister Strain.
I know.
He has a new assignment coming up.
I know.
If we don't kind of kick this into high gear, those, he's gonna lateral, be more than happy to lateral this into July and let somebody else. And we've now managed to make this last a year, so why don't we have imposed at least a first draft? It's just public comment, I mean, that's all we're doing.
Why don't you make a motion then?
Okay, I'll motion that you, Mister Strain, I I I motion that we approve these two policies. To be combined into a single policy and move forward for a second reading.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved by Scott, seconded by Karen to approve these two policies and in a combined version of one, um and move forward for a second reading.
Yeah, and for for my, for my clarification, um now, do we, did we wanna change the five absences and or tardies to be three unexcused absences? Or five um tardies?
Is that in your motion?
That's what was discussed, and the truth is, it's not.
Doesn't matter, cause we're.
It doesn't matter, it's coming back for another reading, but I think you throw it out there like that, Mister Strain, and and let's let. I I I think you're gonna come really close.
I do too.
I mean, we're not, what we're suggesting here truthfully is I listened to the conversation. We're not that far off.
Yeah.
I think it is, is some wordsmithing, some formatting, and combining where it's appropriate and eliminating some verbiage as a result. And I think you'll come back and be pretty close. And we might change five to three next week, or three to five, or whatever, or next month, and we might be able to prove it and be done with it in that meeting.
Say next week.
Time flies, so. But anyway, we might be able to be done with, that's what I would hope. I I would really hope we could put this to bed by.
Yeah, I agree. We've had a lot of discussion, for sure.
Alright.
Okay, any other comments uh regards to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, new policy, uh nepotism.
So Superintendent um spoke with me about this, that in the conversation of the first read, there was a request to take out number F.
Yes.
Limited exemptions for towns, and so he's made that change and is recommending that it be passed as a policy.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the new policy nepotism for implementation.
And a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Carol and seconded by Kathy to approve the new policy on nepotism for implementation. Is there discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we made it through. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay, moved by Kathy, seconded by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Scott was hoping we'd be up by seven thirty.
Thank you. Everyone?